Good evening. We will call this regular board meeting for Wednesday, August 24th, 2022, to order at 5:35 PM. Welcome, everyone. It's wonderful to see all of you. Hopefully, the beginning of the school year is going well for our students and staff, too. With that, rule call, please, Maricela.
Dr. Bankus, here. Mrs. Daniels?
President.
Mr. Jorgensen?
Here.
Reverend Loma?
Reverend Loma is supposed to join us remotely and keep an eye on the remote screen out there and see if he's... Thank you.
Dr. Mel Packham?
Here.
Mrs. Nelson?
Here.
Mrs. Saath?
Here.
We have six board members in attendance in the boardroom, and Director Loma should be joining us remotely at some point in time. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Secretary Bankus, can you please make the motion to adopt the agenda?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the agenda as amended by removing Item D1, Contract Awards, as there are no contract awards.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Maricela, rule call, please.
Dr. Bankus?
Aye.
Mrs. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Jorgensen?
Aye.
Dr. Mel Packham?
Aye.
Mrs. Nelson?
Aye.
Mrs. Saath?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the agenda has been adopted as presented. Pledge of Allegiance, may I please have... It's my pleasure to welcome Mr. Ryan Johnson, teacher at Dougherty High School, up to the podium to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and you shouldn't go too far because I think the next agenda is about you, awards and recognition. Superintendent Gall, I turn it over to you.
How exciting could it be that at my second board meeting, I get to present a National Teacher of the Year Award to Mr. Johnson? Actually, I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson to come up. Maricela, can you read the award?
Congratulations to Dougherty High School's science teacher, Ryan Johnson, who was named 2022 Chemistry Teacher of the Year by the American Association of Chemistry Teachers. Each year, AACT recognizes a K-12 educator who makes outstanding contributions to the chemistry teaching profession through their pedagogy, my apologies, dedication, skills, and accomplishments. The AACT is a professional organization for the K-12 teachers of chemistry under the auspices of the American Chemical Association, which is one of the world's largest scientific societies. At over 1,555,000 members in all fields of chemistry and chemical engineering, AACT recognizes Ryan's passion for sharing chemistry education with high school and college students, as well as the community at large through his contributions to curriculum development. Chemistry conference, symposia, presentations service as the past president of the Colorado Association of Science Teachers, as well as presenting at the TEDx Manitou Springs Conference in 2021 on his combination of a love for chemistry education and experiential learning in Colorado's mountains.
So, a round of applause for our Teacher of the Year.
If I may, I'd like to present some remarks.
Absolutely.
President Mel Packham, members of the Board, Superintendent Gale, thank you so much for this recognition of my being named the 2022 Chemistry Teacher of the Year by the American Association of Chemistry Teachers. I'm humbled and elated to have been given this honor and find myself thinking of my many colleagues, friends, and mentors who have empowered me to be where I am today, including many at Thomas B. Dougherty High School, where I both work, and from where I graduated and was first inspired by my AP Chemistry Teacher, Dr. Julie Firstinoff. Most importantly, as I reflect on my 10 years of chemistry teaching, both at the college and collegiate, or excuse me, the high school and collegiate levels, my mind fills with the faces and names of my students who have walked through my classroom doors, together with whom I've laughed, sometimes battled, and grown, both in chemistry understanding and our humanity through our interactions. It is my continuing primary goal as a chemistry educator to make chemistry education accessible, urgently applicable, and engaging for all students, regardless of their socioeconomic background, the color of their skin, their gender identity, or their educational experiences. I strive each and every day to identify, minimize, and actively combat any and all of my own biases, and I challenge my colleagues, friends, and you, the Board of Education, to continually do the same. Over the course of my career in the classroom, I have discovered that there is nothing that detracts more from a student's education than when they encounter prejudice, closed-mindedness, bigotry, or fundamentalism of any kind that could cause a student to feel isolated, minimized, or unwelcomed. I urge the Board to actively do more to make students feel welcome in our neighborhoods, in our schools, in our classrooms, from chemistry to music, languages to mathematics. On my classroom doors, I proudly display a rainbow-colored periodic table with the words "You are welcome here." This is not some woke display or political statement, but rather a simple gesture that all students, regardless of who they are, what struggles they may have, are welcome, are safe, both in the chemistry lab and from prejudice, and will be safely encouraged and empowered to learn. I hope that the Board will embrace this gesture throughout our proud and beautifully diverse district and not be short-sighted by personal biases or ideologies, but rather cherish the differences that make us D-11. I appreciate your honor and recognition tonight, and I'm proud to represent Colorado Springs School District 11 as both a faculty member and a member of the Dougherty Spartan Class of 2000. Thank you very much.
If you haven't walked the halls at Dougherty, I encourage every member of our community to get over there to see and feel what it means to be a Spartan, and so we appreciate you and acknowledge you for Teacher of the Year. And let's hope that one of your students stands here again in short order, accepting the same award. President Mel Packham?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Johnson, for sharing your message with us, and as you were sharing, and even when I was talking to you out there, I noticed your tie. How cool it is that you have a tie that has the periodic table on it. So, and you know, after the television show Breaking Bad, I think being a chemistry teacher has become cool in the high school, so. But on behalf of the Board, you have our appreciation and gratitude. Thank you for what you are doing, and thank you for engaging our students and helping them grow and bringing chemistry into the classrooms, making chemistry fun. It can be a challenging subject to learn, but through what you do in the classroom, you make it fun. Thank you. It's good to recognize you. School spotlight, Superintendent Gall, we are spotlighting Bristol Elementary School. I turn it over to you.
Thank you, President Mel Packham, and to the members of the community. If I could get the leaders for Bristol Elementary School, Gabe, come on up. So, I asked, I tasked my staff with the first day of school to find for me the school that embodied over the last year, particularly over the summer as we prepared for the school year, who's getting achievement, who's getting engagement, and who's getting enrollment down best. I was fortunate enough to be able to visit Bristol on open house night, I think it was the night before, the weekend before school started, and I didn't want to leave. It was engaging. You'll hear a lot about it. I want to call out Mr. Hanson. I don't know if you're going to call him out for Suzuki. Can you stand up, Mr. Hanson? Where are you? My son's a violin player at Washington State University Orchestra, and he was also exposed to a first through third grade strings program in Fairfax, Virginia, and that was a life-changing experience for my son. So, programs like that and others that Gabe will share with us here in a moment are the types of things that we want to bring to all our schools in District 11 to ensure that all of our students can have a proud parent like myself talking about my son's experience back east. Over to you, Gabe.
All right, thank you, thank you, Board of Education, Superintendent Gall. So, it was nice, short notice. Thanks, Brandon, but we got it done. So, before we even get started, I want to introduce the teachers that I have with me here. So, Mr. Hanson, you saw he was just standing up. We have kindergarten teacher Kathy Maynard, and our PE teacher, Tricia Wissinger. So, throughout this, you could see up on the TVs that we call ourselves Bristol Elementary School, the Arts and STEM. We are a newly appointed STEM pathway school. We like to say STEAM, but to really specify that, because a lot of people don't understand the A in STEAM, so we're putting the arts, but also because we have the violin and orchestra program, kind of designate that a little bit more. So, in this presentation, you'll see that we're going to cover the One Plan, some of our CMAS data, enrollment, what we've done to get some enrollment up, and just some history of it. And then what makes Bristol special? We have our programs, the violin program, STEAM, Visual and Creative Arts Program, and then, like you alluded to, our opening for students and teachers as well. So, One Plan, CMAS data. So, last year, one of our first major improvement strategy was centered around ELA. Looking at the data the year before, we noticed that our data was, just looking at CMAS, LAO, Acadians, all that, we noticed that our data was stagnant or slightly declining. It wasn't declining a lot, but you know, 1% or 2% is something that we don't want to see, and so we want to keep it up there. So, we made it a focus to really focus on ELA this last year. So, some of the strategies that we used, we used all of our data sources, you know, we really dug into the data, looked at not just composite score or colors of, you know, dibbles, Acadians, and really dug into what the students were missing in reading. We use Galileo, other tests, classroom tests as well, to help us with that. We added an intervention program called 95% Group, and we did that not quite school-wide, but every kindergarten student got, you know, got that 95% group at that level, and then we targeted certain students that that program would fit for. So, it was not just a one-size-fits-all type of program, so it was more targeted. We split our ESR2 Reading Intervention Program into two positions, so two halftime positions, to add, you know, additional interventionist tutor. And so, what that did, we took them and we had their schedule catered to our readers' workshop schedule. Then, we use all of our ED tutoring money, Read Act funding, and then I pulled out some of the principal budget so we can start a couple of weeks earlier with our reading program, workshop program. And so, we got those tutors in a couple of weeks earlier, just to get that going a little bit faster. And then, all classroom and all classroom teachers, interventionists, participated in the data meetings involving reading. And so, on the very bottom there, you can see that we really emphasize every minute counts, you know, transition times going from specials to the classroom or classroom to lunch, really using every minute. And you'll see later why it's really important, because we have so many programs and pullouts at Bristol, that we have to really emphasize that every minute counts. So, here you can see our ELA, our passing rate. So, this is every student that meets or exceeds expectations. And so, the blue, the blue bar on the left of each, of each grade level is our pre-COVID. The orange is COVID or last, yeah, two years ago. And then, the green is what we did last year. So, we can see for third grade, we were 41% meets or exceed standard, our expectations, and we were 56% this last school year. So, we're above pre-COVID at that level. Fourth grade, again, we were above pre-COVID levels, and we were at 62% passing, and in fifth grade, 68% passing. The next one we have are our math. So, as you probably noticed throughout the whole, the whole district and the state, math scores are lower, and we're not an exception to that. Our math scores, while they're, they're good, and we're above state, you know, state average, it's, we still want to go higher. So, that's one of our focuses for this next, for this school year, is our math scores. So, you can see in third grade, we were 1%, almost 1% above pre-COVID levels, 44% passing. State average was 39.4, so we were above state average, which is nice to see. In fourth grade, that's where we had a little bit of struggle, and this was across the board, district, and statewide, that the passing rate statewide was 30.7%. We were 44%, which was nice to see that we were still above that. And then, fifth grade is where we see a lot of our growth there, and state, state average was 34.9%, and we were at 70% passing. Our other major improvement strategy that we had was our attendance rates. Now, some of this has to do with COVID, but looking past COVID, before COVID, we were at about 92%, you know, weekly attendance rate. So, not horrible, but we would like to see it around 95, 94, 95%. Being a small school, just a few students, you really take that number down pretty fast, you know, but we can, you can definitely correlate kids being in school and passing and not, right? So, getting those numbers up is what we want to do. So, we really, this last year, focused in on specific weeks that we saw drops of attendance down into the 70s and low 80s, and we offered incentives, tried to get them to be at school those weeks. So, one of the things that we had was STEAM activity balloons over Broadway. I think other schools might do that, too. But the nice thing about that is that students were extremely excited to come to school. They were talking to their parents about it. I had parents at the drop-off lane come and ask me, hey, what is this balloon thing that we're working, that we're doing at school? Because my kids will not stop talking about it, you know? So, that, that's fun to see, that they are excited about the activities they're doing, and it helps boost that attendance, especially during that week, you know, a targeted week. We have the Christmas sing-along with Santa that I'm forced to dress as an elf as, you know, so, you know, that's, that's a lot of fun. But also, we have the family engagement nights, you know, we have our music programs. Our music teacher, she incorporates a lot of science in there, so she's integrating the science into her music programs. And even if the students aren't at school that day, we at least get them to show up to the music programs. And so, that's one small step that we can get, you know, that they're excited to come to the music program, so let's get them excited to come to school as well. And then, we have STEAM family engagement nights, which you'll see a couple of pictures here next, or coming up here. So, enrollment. So, according to our district website, school website, our school functional capacity is 250 students. That, the problem with that number is that that puts us having a combo class, right? Either first, second grade, fourth, fifth grade. First, first grade is such a critical year in teaching phonics and reading and everything, and so it's hard to have a combo class at that grade. Fourth, fifth grade, that's testing grades, right? And so, that's CMAS state testing, so that is also another burden that we have sometimes. So, without combo classes, if we had 12, 12 student, or 12 teachers like we do this year, at 250, we would have 20.83 average students, which is still a pretty good number if we have our functional capacity. So, you can see, we have our past enrollments, 2017, we had 248 students, and you can kind of see the trend as it starts dropping, our enrollment numbers start dropping. 2020, when we came back in, we'll talk about on the next slide, but that was, we saw, that was my first year at Bristol, but also we saw our largest decline in students. A lot of factors behind that, but we were still going down even before that 212, before COVID, we were still going down. Last year, we had 247 students. This year, we're at about 270-ish students, plus or minus a few. Out of that 270, you can see that we're, 66% of our students are choice into our students, or into our school, so they permit in, and 20% of that 270 are from out of district, which is really nice to see. And then, also, we're at this point with around 100 applications, I think we have a little bit more than that now, we're 56% free and reduced lunch as well. So, we have a high free and reduced lunch population and choice population as well. So, 2020, 2021, our enrollment, COVID was a big factor, right? We know students were staying home, they weren't coming to school, so that was a big factor. We started online, pushed a lot of parents away, a lot of students away. Then, we went person, then we went online, and then we're back in person. That's just a lot for parents, especially if your job is requiring you to be there all the time, you just can't do that, right? So, we lost enrollment because of that. We were already declining, then that happened, so that, that hurt a lot. We actually got down to 198 students at that year at a certain point, and so, we had a lot going on, you know, against the school at that, at that year. So, we started the year 232, got down to 198. So, that was a big loss. We lost our title funding, so that was around $127,000 that we lost with that. So, that created a first, second grade combo class, and being online, trying to teach combo class, that, that's really rough, and being a parent, trying to figure out what was going on online is really tough, too. So, we lost our full-time social worker at that time. We lost a lot, we lost a couple of reading interventionists because of that money loss. So, when I came in, you know, just kind of observing things, a lot going on, COVID, met with BLT, and then later we brought it to staff, and so, a few questions that we asked were, where are we as a school, right? We have to change something, so where are we as a school? So, we ask, you know, what, you know, this included the programming, enrollment, staffing, just where were we as a school? Then, we had, we had to ask, who are we? You know, what is our identity in the community? What are we known for? And the sad thing, a lot of people don't even know where Bristol is, don't know anything about Bristol. When I tell people, when I got the job, they thought it was a brewery, right? Which, sometimes that could be appreciated, you know, I would like that, maybe more funding, too. But, so, but most people thought it was, it was a brewery, you know, and so, they had no idea what, anything about Bristol. And so, then we asked, where are we going? Where do we need to go? Why would we want to go as a staff to make it where everyone wants to be there? So, we discussed our advertising, we discussed the programs that we have, programs that we want. We talked about the AMP, you know, Academic Master Plan, pathway schools, and, you know, possibly applying for pathway school. And then, we talked about enrollment. How do we get our enrollment back up? How do we keep our academics high as well? So, increasing enrollment. So, advertising was a big thing. We went to, now, this is my first year, you can see I'm Mr. Incredible Bristol in the picture, and so, those are the real muscles. I slimmed down just for this board meeting. But, so, you know, we advertised Boo at the Zoo, and I push, I push it hard. Actually, I think I saw you and your family at the zoo, and I asked people where, what school their kids go to, and I flat-out told them, hey, come to Bristol, we're a better school, you know? And so, you know, a lot of that, they laughed about that, but I was being serious. We changed our website up, we started putting a lot more stuff on the website, getting more information to parents, offering school tours on there. We had to get the word of mouth out there, so we talked with parents, brought PTAN, and really had them help advertise and get the word of mouth. And then, the well-rounded approach, we pushed that. When I was at Boo at the Zoo, last year, we had Ms. Maynard, she was at Boo at the Zoo with a third-grade teacher, talking about all the programs to really create that well-rounded education for all the students. You know, the other thing was we pushing, we're a small school, 250, 270 students, that is appealing to a lot of parents, you know, and that's one reason they tell me all the time that they want to be there. Besides, you know, the violin and STEAM program, they want to be, their kids be at a small school. If you Google Bristol, we're at an eight out of 10 for great schools. That comes up for every, you know, every, every school you Google, great schools comes up. You can click on it and see where you're at. We should be at nine out of 10, you know, this year, so we'll see as they change things. But the other thing is the relationships. We're really pushing relationships. A parent applies as a new student or a choice student, I call them on the phone, I talk to the parents on the phone, I offer personal tours with me so they can see the school anytime, and they can sign up for those on the website. As you see up there, there's other top-secret things that we can't share everything with people, you know, because we want to keep our students and everybody. But also, the AMV, the STEAM pathway school, becoming that STEAM pathway school and advertising that even more is a hope to keep our number strong. All right, so, what makes Bristol special? So, this teacher does not know her pictures up there, so we're not going to tell anybody, right? So, you know, I think it starts with our teachers and our staff. We have a very, very dedicated staff and teachers. I mean, they will do anything you ask them for, ask them to do, you know, try not to use that too much, but they are just so dedicated, it's, it's amazing. We have staff members that know every single student's name in the school, except, you know, kindergarten's a little dicey right now because they're brand-new, but they make it a point to know, know students. You know, Ms. Maynard is kindergarten teacher, she knows students that have gone all the way through. We, the special teachers, of course, know them, but they make it a point to have those personal relationships. So, they know the names. And then, the small school, that's something that's special about us. Our students in our community, it is, they want to be there, right? We're 66% choice. They want to be at Bristol, and so, that's fantastic that they want to be there. So, that encourages students to work hard, parents to be a little bit more engaged. And do we have perfect engagement? Absolutely not, but the parents want to be there, and we want them to come in and be engaged. So, some of the programs that we have at Bristol, so Bristol, we have our two main specials, which is music and PE, and they rotate every other day. And then, we have a lot of pullouts that we have to do. So, that's when I talk about every minute counts, they get pulled out of, out of class to do these other things, and so, we have to make every minute count. And so, becoming the STEAM pathway school, we're going to be helping, some of that will help integrate into the classroom, so some of the STEAM class won't be such a pullout, right? And so, we have pullouts. So, K through 5, we have visual arts class once a week, STEAM Lab once a week, kindergarten through third grade learns to play the violin, and then, fourth and fifth grade, they can pick band, orchestra, or creative arts class. And it's not, there's no opt-out, so they have to pick one of those classes in fourth and fifth grade. And then, our music performances, like I said earlier, that our general music teacher, she, she integrates science and everything into her performances. And you can see the list of after-school activities. We have chess club, we have volleyball, we have basketball. A teacher, a third-grade teacher does Ukrainian egg painting, you know, yoga, whatever the teachers are interested in. But we have, and it changes, you know, every year, but we have a long list of the programs we offer after school as well. So, the next one up is our Suzuki violin, and Mr. Hanson is going to talk for a couple of minutes about that. And if you don't know Mr. Hanson, he's also the, you know, concert master for the Philharmonic as well, so we're pretty lucky to have him.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak about our program, Superintendent Gall, President Mel Packham, and the members of the Board. When I was invited many years ago to found the Suzuki violin program, and yes, I did, many years ago at Bristol Elementary, I was excited to share the special joy of music with the children at Bristol. As a child in Portland, Oregon, I attended an elementary school very similar to Bristol. My family was of modest means, but my parents valued music and the arts, and I had many wonderful teachers like the teachers at Bristol that invested in me. It's a privilege to work with all of the families at Bristol, but there's something especially personally gratifying to me about sharing the violin with so many students who wouldn't otherwise have the opportunity so early in life. Dr. Sanichi Suzuki looked at Japan and the aftermath of the devastation of World War II and wanted to help rebuild his country and help the world to heal. His hope was that children would develop love and beautiful hearts by learning to create beauty in music. What makes the Suzuki violin method particularly suitable for young children is that skill acquisition may require many small steps and many, many repetitions to attain mastery, but any experience of mastery alters every child's capacity, creating a new and different trajectory for their development and education. In our program, once children are able to hold the instrument properly, they begin by rote learning, listening, and repetition. Dr. Suzuki referred to this as the mother-tongue approach. It's not intended to create musically illiterate children, but to place emphasis on the students developing an intuitive, physical relationship with music and with their instrument. One important message I think our program communicates to the families and children at Bristol, while we're going to have fun learning to play the violin, we take you seriously. Bristol takes you seriously. School District 11 is invested in you. You are important, important enough that your school is providing you with this very unusual opportunity. While we're having fun with the violin, students learn about themselves. I ask them questions. How many times do you need to repeat something to learn it? Is it difficult or easy for you to learn in a particular way? Do you need to develop your ability to focus, to listen more carefully, or control your body in a particular way? This attention to acquiring skills while having fun turns our Suzuki classroom into a student-driven learning laboratory, without students even being aware of it. In my mind, the most important subject they are learning is really not the violin or music, but self-awareness as agents of their own education. Playing the violin even moderately well requires well-developed sense of space and proportion, expressed as pitch, loudness, tempo, rhythmic divisions, fine motor control, careful discrimination in listening, tenacious repetition, and in a group awareness and responsiveness to one another. All of these skills we can, can be thought of as independently valuable experiences creating beauty, but also, perhaps more importantly, in a public school setting... creating beauty, but also perhaps more importantly, in a public school setting, they are skills supporting students in all other curricular activities, other content activities and their skills more easily acquired often while focusing their learning on music, art, drama, or physical activities in gym. One last point I would like to make is that often families and sometimes teachers will attend a performance by their students and leave with a much greater and deeper understanding when they see what their children can do. I have seen many times that these insights strengthen and deepen relationships between children and parents, teachers and families, and our schools and our community. Thank you for the many ways you support our students in School District 11, especially our STEM and Suzuki programs at Bristol.
So you can see, these kids are fourth graders, as you see in this picture here on the left, how that board behind them has actually changed three times since they've been there, so. And in the next picture, you can see, on the next slide, so this last, this was this last school year, these were third graders there at their Suzuki violin performance. Another program that we have is our STEAM program. This started, you know, school, school-driven, self-started throughout the, through the school, just as noticing things that the students need, you know? So more creative thinking, more problem solving, and so the STEAM program really helps with that. So on the next slide, you see the very top picture, one of our, we have STEAM Family Engagement Nights. And so they come in, they do fun STEAM activities where they go through, you know, some of them go through the engineering design process, they build and they have to improve their designs. Then the one below, on the bottom picture, is called Planet Ball. And so this is one of the biggest hits that the parents get to go against their students. And I don't know if you can see, but there's this hula hoop orbs in the back that you've got to throw the, the, you know, soft balls at and try to knock it down. And so you see parents crawling on the, on the floor, going after the balls, trying, wanting to beat their student with their kids, which is, it's, it's pretty amusing to watch, so next time we come, you guys can come and join us and play that, you can be on the student's side, maybe, I don't know. So the next thing that we have, you know, part of the STEAM program is a coding and robotics. Now, that is a huge emphasis right now, just in the aerospace engineering world is a coding. I mean, think about your Apple phones or any phones you have, it's, it's just, it's just huge. And that's, you know, the robotics, self-driving cars, Tesla, you know, a wave of the future that we're trying to prepare our students for. Some of the STEAM projects, you know, we're integrating them into art class, we're integrating into science and social studies, reading and math. And we also have our visual and creative arts classes, so every music performance or violin performance, orchestra, we follow that up with an art and STEAM walk where the students, the parents, the students get to walk their parents through the hall, show them the STEAM activities that they've done, show them the artwork that they've done that's posted on the wall. One of the big things when parents, I tour of parents around our school, is that they always comment about the artwork at the school, which is really nice to hear. The other picture you see, it's a creative arts class, so in creative arts, they did a lot of different things, they did more advanced projects, they did a little theater stuff, but we had this volunteer come in and teach students that wanted to learn how to play the harp, how to play the harp. And one of the students in there is a student you would never expect to ever want to play the harp and he absolutely loved it. And he would ask about it all the time, he would brag about it. And the nice thing about the harp, that it sounds good, too, right? So I can even play it and I sound somewhat decent, I don't know. All right, and so opening our, our school this year, we'll start with the way we open it with the staff meeting, our opening staff meeting. So I had, this guy was actually my high school teacher for psychology and sociology and he, he came down from Denver and he put on this team-building, fun competition games that, that he has, that he's created. And some of these games I actually played in high school with them. The, I mean, it was fun seeing the staff starting the school year smiling, they had to do a walkout dance with their team, come with a team name, and it was just a fun, easy way to start and have them smiling to begin with. The bad thing about this is that my team lost and so, what? Well, we didn't lose, we, we lost the overall, but we, we won a couple, but we didn't win the overall, which is very, very disappointing, so we'll have to try that again. Okay, and so for the students this year, on August 15th, we had our kindergarten open house from two to three. We like to separate that out because kindergarten parents, some of them are sending their kids off for the first time, some have no problem sending their kids off because it might be their third and final kid, right? But they, we, we try to pay more attention, give them a lot more information because they haven't had their kids in there yet. So that was two to three, it was a hard day, we didn't have the turnout that we truly wanted because we had that, the funeral for the fallen officer that day as well. And traffic was just really, really bad, they couldn't get there, I had messages on ClassDojo saying, we're trying to get there, we're not going to make it. So the kindergarten teachers kept it going and they had, you know, multiple sessions as parents showed up, but that, you know, messed up some of the attendance. And then for first and through fifth grade, we had a 3:45 to 5 o'clock, Mr. Gall was there and he, it was actually really nice that the family that you talked to and walked down the hall with you, they talked to me afterward and they really appreciated you, you know, talking and walking with them and getting to know them, so that was, that was really nice that they did that. So we, teachers discuss their curricula, their rules, their procedures of the classroom, students got to see their seats, drop off supplies, of course, and meet, and meet their new teacher. And then we had our school regifier there in the office and trying to finalize enrollment, accepting new enrollments. We still had students calling that day and the next day trying to enroll into the school. And so she was there accepting all those documents and helping them get that started. And then the non-classroom teachers, they're greeting students in the front door, cheering for them, welcoming them into, into the classroom, and then we had others walking them to their new classroom, showing them where their classrooms were, if they're new, or just, you know, from second grade, they moved to the other side of the building, to the other halls and showing where that is. So that's Bristol Spotlight. Any questions that you have for?
We'll, we'll open it up for questions, I just wanted to acknowledge for the board, strong personalized leader with a clear vision who found the resources to make it his and their school. You will feel known when you walk into Bristol, immediately. Trish, I've got her name, Patty Jewett lives next to Patty Jewett. Trish knew every parent and every child by name as they walked in that building. It was a remarkable experience, the numbers show it, you all are off to a great start. And I want all our leaders to see that just because we're asking you to plan with more attention to detail, doesn't mean that you shouldn't be enjoying it and having a good time. Bristol is a great place to spend a day, a year, or a whole elementary experience. To the board.
Thank you. Board members, I have a comment to make too and a couple of questions, but I'll first defer to my board. Director Daniels.
So good to see you.
Yeah, you too.
Happy New Year.
You too, thank you.
I love it and of course, I mean, thank you for really doing the work, right? And just stepping forward and being the leader as Superintendent Gall mentioned. And I knew that you guys were, I mean, I'm part, right? But thank you for just highlighting all that you do well and making sure that people know they're welcomed. And thank you for a little bit of your background and knowing that what you come from and what you're bringing to the table is powerful. I hope people spend time to get to know you because I know that you're here based on choice as well. It is not just because you had to, you chose it and thank you. So you lead from choice and that's, I, I, I can't thank you enough for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Director Nelson.
How does it work if a student comes in, say, second or third grade and they miss the prior years of the Suzuki?
Yeah, so that's a big question we have with parents as well, right?
People watching might want to know.
Yeah, can, can my, can my student catch up to where they are? So that's the beauty of our program, that Mr. Hanson or our, our band director as well, they bring the students right in. You know, they, fourth and fifth grade have the option to go to creative arts coming in, but they also have the option of doing band or orchestra or, you know, of course, Suzuki. And so we just fit them right in, Mr. Hanson has a few extra times that he can pull those students separately just to catch them up, but also he's really good at just working them right into the system and making it easy for them.
Awesome.
And I think that also goes to the culture of the school, too. The students are very supportive of each other and helpful, you know, and it's not a, they're not helpful in a, hey, I know this, you don't know it, it's a helpful way that they truly want to help the students and that's the relationship building that we, you know, do at, at the school.
How is the program funded? Like the instruments and?
I don't know.
Is that one of your, is it one of your FTEs?
Yeah, so, yeah, so really, and, and, Mr. Hanson is a full-time FTE, he's also the orchestra teacher, so that, you know, that point two for the orchestra teacher is pulled out and put somewhere else in there and we're funded as an additional FTE.
Okay. Awesome.
So I don't know where the funding comes from.
Thank you for sharing tonight, it's very exciting to hear about.
Okay, looking, no further comments. So thank you for the work that you guys are doing out there. You were stepping into some big shoes out there when the previous principal left and your staff would vouch for that and you've stepped in seamlessly out there, even though you went through the challenges, you had a plan and a vision and that's what we keep emphasizing over and over about. If we put dynamic leaders into our classroom buildings, we are going to be addressing declining student enrollment and you are proof that two years back through COVID, you were below 200 and now you are over 270, okay? And you took the initiative to go to the Boo, Boo to the Zoo and all the other community events that you are talking about. And another thing that I wanted to emphasize, and this is another feedback that I got from the Rudy principal when I was out there, and she said about greatschools.org, how the scores out there, she took charge as a principal when she walked into that school of that website. She said that some schools don't and then it becomes like people get in there and the ratings decline. And inevitably, when new parents move into our communities, even though they shouldn't be making their decisions based on some feedback provided on greatschools.org, but parents generally go and look at the scores out there. And principals should be aware that this is something that, you know, parents look at, so I'm glad that you are addressing that, you are looking at that and some of the amazing stories that you are sharing about what's happening in the schools and the enthusiasm your students have, it's just great to see that. And your numbers, 270 plus. So my question is, you said the capacity is 250? So now you are then over capacity, how many students can you accommodate in that school safely?
Well, I mean, it's kind of relative, that's going off the district's guide, right, of 250 over capacity, so, I mean, that, to me personally, that 20, 21, 22 is a good number for classrooms, but we have in our kindergarten classroom right now, 24, 25 in that and, you know, 25 in first grade, so I think it's harder to have a higher number of younger grades, but fourth and fifth can go definitely higher. You know, and we can accept, especially in fifth grade, we have several openings in fifth grade right now, so.
Okay, so you can accept, you're not like stopping your?
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, yep.
Good, yeah. And seeing that 60, was that the number, 66% of your students' choice sent to the school?
Yep.
And then 20%, you are a school that's located in the center of the district and you have 20% of the students coming from outside the district, then they are choosing your district, you, school?
Correct.
For a reason. And I know you would give your credit to your staff, I want to give the credit to you, okay? It starts with a strong leader up there, so thank you for bringing that leadership to Bristol. Thank you.
Yep. Good. Thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you. So just quickly, going over the public comments protocol, most of you are familiar with this, the board will hear comments for a total of 60 minutes. We hear action and non-action items comments first and then the reminder of the minutes is set aside for general comments. If students signed up, we will prioritize a few student comments first. Each of you have three minutes for your comment, a clock will be displayed on the screen to help you through that, please monitor the clock so you can get through your comment in those three minutes. The board is interested in listening to all public comments without any disruption, so please be respectful of our speakers and maintain the expected order and decorum in the boardroom. Treat every speaker the way we all want to be treated, with kindness, dignity, and respect. If you want to show support or solidarity to a speaker, please stand up as the speaker is talking or use a silent applause. Lastly, the statements made by the public do not reflect the views of the board or the district. And I want to add one more, just to remind the audience, the board does not hear oral complaints regarding school personnel except in the manner provided for elsewhere in policies and regulation. If this is the nature of your complaint and the topic that you are going to address the board about, please indicate on the front of the form that you want to be contacted so the superintendent or one of his staff can contact you. Okay, with that, Marcell, I think you've already given me, okay, thank you. And they are in the order? Right? Yeah. The first speaker, Ms. Molly McDonald.
Thank you, guys. I'm, I'm here because I was met with an email that was not responded to by the principal at Holmes Middle School. I have a seventh grader who, the first day of school, we were very excited for, and he gets to the school and finds out that lunch is assigned seating with no talking. There's no talking in the hallway, there were locker checks. Also, at the very beginning of school, when he rode the bus to school, buses were segregated to boys on one side and girls on the other. So I have a kid that comes home who is just very confused, so I wrote an email to the principal that was not answered. So my question is to the board, one, how long will this last and what can be done? Because why were we punishing kids on the first day of school for things that they haven't even done yet? My son shared with me that the eighth graders, I guess, were brought up as part of the issue at this school, but they have moved on. A third of this school has moved on, a third of the kids are new, why are we punishing the new kids and existing children for things that they haven't done wrong? And the kids who are self-reflective, what's going on with them? You know, that they think they have done something wrong when really they haven't done anything wrong. So my other question was, what was the plan for retaliation? You know, if these kids get to the point where they've had enough, because the next day then, the, the assigned seating was still in place, but we can talk, but there's low classical music playing and as long as they don't speak over the music, which seems like some sort of torture for kids, because aren't they supposed to have some sort of, you know, interactions that is not in a structured learning setting? So it further, for me, reinforces like the social isolation that has already taken place over the last couple of years. We weren't notified of any of the behavioral modification, which is what they called it, which tells me that it was tried to have the wool pulled over our eyes and I just don't like that. I'm usually very supportive of teachers and of what's being done because I realize kids in middle school is a very hard time, so I'm, I'm very hands-on parent, but this kind of went a little too far for me. What it tells me is the school has no control and everything's just kind of like free-falling. So who's in control here? And if there were issues that the behavioral modification needed to be in place for because there were so many incidences last year with, with 100 fewer students, what was the board doing to help give resources to the school? You know, so that the, so that this year, we could have had more of a seamless start instead of just starting it and having my kiddo come home and say to me, you know, I feel isolated from my friends, I get five minutes, you know, on the playground, you know, with my friends and I can't even connect to them. So these are just like some issues that we are five days into school on and that I just wanted to be brought to your attention because I just don't feel this is right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. I was just looking at your form, you have asked an administrator to contact you and I've written the notes and I'm going to pass it on to Superintendent Gall, so somebody from administration will be contacting you. And I got your personal information too, so thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Cheryl Saylor.
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, once again, we thank you for the opportunity to come together for one single purpose, to achieve a superior level of academic excellence for every single child in the District 11 school system. Help us to keep that goal in the forefront of our thoughts and actions, lead us in working cooperatively together to accomplish this goal in the most efficient and effective way possible. Provide us with creative ideas and the means to accomplish our goals. We ask for your blessings along the way, in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. My name is Cheryl Saylor, I'm the grandparent of two children in District 11 this year and I'm a member of the D11 Achievement Alliance. There sure is a lot of positive energy and enthusiasm around as we start off this new school year. Our last school board meeting was a great example. We were all pretty excited about it. We were all pretty excited about a short and sweet meeting, getting out of here before seven o'clock. Maybe the board is setting a new standard. Also, we were very impressed with the list of accomplishments Superintendent Gall shared with us in his remarks at the last meeting. I, for one, can't wait to get to that part in the meeting this, this week. Talk about enthusiasm, and thank you, Superintendent Gall. So yes, lots of excitement and enthusiasm as we start the new year. We saw it at the 150th anniversary celebration last week, and what a blessing to be able to be involved at such a time as this, to participate in turning D11 into the outstanding district in the country for academic excellence. Wow. I think Superintendent Gall said something to that effect at the last meeting. I'm all for it. I guess my message for tonight is that even though there are challenges and stresses for everyone as we start off the new year, can we just maintain the positive energy and momentum with which we have started off this year as we get back to the work of educating our children? One of the things we are working on in the Achievement Alliance is finding ways to get more parents and community members back into the schools. Historically, schools in the community were where all the action was. Now people are so busy, it's often difficult for them to be involved. We know that having parents involved at the schools has a positive impact on student learning, so we hope to work closely with the board and our superintendent to find fun, creative ways to accomplish that. With that in mind, here's wishing everyone a great school year. We're all ready to dig in and get the job done, so let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ricky Plank.
Is it all right to give you guys papers?
Yes, you can give it to our secretary, and she will pass it to you.
For folders for the...
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Before I start my part, because I have a hypothesis that mine goes as to why Madison Elementary was listed as the regular board meeting on this handout right out front, now changed to Bristol, I'm sure what I'm about to say has something to do with that, but that's just a hypothesis. On August 18th, 2022, the third day of Madison Elementary School, an assault took place where a student brought a weapon onto school grounds, and during second recess before lunch, this kid then used it on equipment, staff, and students, because the principal was affected, and he was the one that was out there supposed to be watching them. And then afterwards, law enforcement were not contacted, which is disgusting, because it is a weapon, and he did assault two entire second-grade classrooms. Under, and I'm trying not to say names out of, you know, security and all that for the student, because I know who that was now, I don't know his last name. But the paperwork that I have given out to you all, I highlighted a few parts of it. One of, the very first part is the letter that was sent home by the principal. I'm going to read a few highlight, those two highlighted sections. "I want to assure you, the top priority at Madison is student and staff safety." And then it goes on about the incident regarding what they believe is pepper spray, but since no formal investigation was done, we are unsure, "which caused other second graders to be impacted," which would be the rest of the two second-grade classrooms that were on recess during the time. The very next document is a stapled, the student, student-parent handbook of Madison Elementary. If you go to the very next-to-last page, it deals with the weapons-on-school-ground policies. "Madison Elementary does not tolerate weapons on school grounds. Students in the possession of a weapon on school grounds will be subject to District 11 disciplinary policies and state law." I made sure to highlight "and state law," since law enforcement, for some reason, was kept out of this loop. Because it was a student, I didn't bother highlighting the part that after that says adults in violation will be charged with state law. Didn't think that part was relevant. The very next paperwork that you see, and I'm sorry that it's so many papers, is the District 11 policy regarding how to clarify if this pepper spray is indeed a weapon. And according to District 11 policy, standard weapons, a standard weapon includes but is not limited to pepper spray, the very first thing you all listed. And then the very last paper on there is the use of physical intervention and restraint, which I do saw, I saw was on your agenda later tonight.
Okay.
But five of those were violated.
Thank you, Mr. Plank. Your three minutes are up.
Okay. But you can see the rest of the paper there highlighted.
And I would suggest also you can send an email to the rest of the board.
So I just want to know what District 11's doing about all this.
Okay.
I do have a meeting tomorrow, 7:00 AM, as far as the formal complaint procedures involving, you know, the employed personnel.
Okay.
But that student is still at Madison.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And Superintendent Gall mentioned to us that he's meeting with you tomorrow, so.
Yep, I have a call back as well, too.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you for bringing this to the attention of the board, and administration is going to meet with you, and hopefully we can come to a resolution on it tomorrow. And we will follow up on it, even though you didn't ask to be contacted back since we already have...
You already have the meetings.
Yeah, since already, yeah. It'll be taken care of. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Caroline Intiman. Ms. Caroline, if I said your last name wrong, I apologize. Intiman.
As in Intimacy's pastries, but...
Okay. Yeah.
I'm amazed that I'm here doing this right now, but it's my friend Lynn, who was on the board, you might have a board. I'm sorry, I can't hear. Oh, my, my friend Lynn asked me to do this. She was on the board, and she's my great friend. So she asked me to bring copies of a book my mom wrote on the history of the Colorado Springs schools, so I'm going to give these here.
Thank you.
And Deborah said she was, isn't that a lot where your... That was good. So I'm short and sweet, I hope. At least I'm sweet, I guess. Is this just fine? So I will begin with the antique school bill that belonged to my mother. I'm going to cry. It's about my mom, and it was a symbol of how much she valued the schools. When she was researching this book, she asked me to drive over 100 miles across Wyoming to buy the school bill at an auction that she had read about in a newsletter. I never could imagine I would be here bringing it to District 11's school board meeting tonight, 50 years later, to help me introduce her book. She always tried to get a know and support our teachers. She impressed on us as children the importance of history, that history is not about living in the past, but learning from the past, to cherish our teachers, to consider the cards that we were dealt with in life. She would sometime take us with her for interviews with living pioneers, to listen to them and to hear their stories. She was the president of the PTA at Taylor School. It was an exciting day for her when I accompanied her to the 100th anniversary of Steele School, which she attended as a child. If there was an article about one of our teachers in the newspaper, she would clip them and mail them to me, like Don Green, who did the sculpture in front of the Performing Arts Center, who was my North Star my whole life, even though I was living in Wyoming. She'd send articles about his sculptures and what he had been doing. And then, okay, so let's see. I still remember the names of the teachers I had at Taylor, except for fifth grade. I don't know why, I just don't remember that at all. So we were taught to value our teachers and our schools, and I often think of the teachers I had here in District 11 who made learning so exciting and sent us off with big dreams. Milton at Norris Jr., Mr. Hitesmith's civics class, ninth-grade civics class, and it was so incredibly important. And I can still see him lecturing, so that's it. That's all I have to say, but Lynn thought it would be nice if you had that book. She did that, she made, wrote that book in the early 70s, when she still had two more kids at home, and you didn't, you couldn't do self-publishing or everything, always massive amount of research at the Pioneer Museum and various libraries and things like that. And she was a chemistry major, by the way. Is the chemistry guy still here? Oh, well, okay. She's a chemistry, had a chemistry degree from Boulder, so, but, but she wrote and cared about teachers and education, so.
So thank you so much. I displayed the book, so they can catch it on the camera, too, for the people that are... And maybe they can go on Amazon or something and purchase this book.
It is on Amazon. I have a box of books, if people are interested, I can find a way if they...
Oh, thank you.
But I can bring them with me, I just bought.
Yeah, you can talk to Ms. Ashby out there, maybe she can connect with you and see if that's something that we can use. But thank you so much, we, the board appreciates...
Oh, wow, did I go to my three hours?
Yes, but the board appreciates that you brought this to us.
Okay.
And I am really looking forward to, and I'm sure so is my board colleagues, looking into reading the history of District 11.
And I'm happy to talk to anybody if they want to know more.
Yep. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Chrissanne Young.
Thank you, school board administrators and the D11 community for the opportunity to speak. My name is Chrissanne Young, and I'm a grandmother, a mother, a small business owner, and a 30-plus-year D11 community member. As a youngster, my grandfather taught me in order to navigate the world with some degree of success, I must always do what is right, and I would need to consistently test my course of action on what made sense. God would take care of the rest. Reflecting back on the last two and a half years, I have been struggling, like many of you, to make sense out of pretty much everything. I feel as if we all have been living in an unrelenting sea of information and disinformation, these waves crashing down around us while we constantly tread water. During the pandemic, as I began to wake up, I heard a lot about education, and the information that I heard gave me cause to be alarmed regarding what our children were being taught and not being taught. I observed that basic skills training seemed to be replaced with social and political indoctrination. The stats showed us that approximately only 29% of students were proficient in math and other basics. It just didn't make sense to me, any of it. I decided to start attending school board meetings to educate myself on what was really happening in our schools. I attended multiple district meetings to see how each one was operating and to observe differences. I focused on D11 and attended the majority of those meetings since I reside in this district. I, like many others, saw a need for a change in leadership. Because of that, I became heavily involved in the school board elections last fall in order to do my part in affecting that change. I walked many neighborhoods, and I talked to lots of parents, grandparents, and community members. I heard concerns that addressed some of the controversial topics that were also being discussed at board meetings. However, the predominant concern other than CRT was that schools were not supporting academic achievement and did not seem concerned with student performance. Needless to say, I was relieved when leadership changed. After attending the D11 school board meeting last week, I was actually joyful as I unlocked my car to go home. I felt as if finally stopped treading water, at least where D11 is concerned, and my fledging arms drew so much relief. I was so encouraged to hear the district vision from our new superintendent, Michael Gall. For the first time, like many of us who had been attending meetings for the last year and a half, I heard the words "academic achievement" flow from our new leader. This was the first meeting I had attended that a plan for academic excellence had been discussed, let alone laid out. I'm encouraged and grateful beyond belief, and even though I still struggle with making sense out of the senseless, I feel as if I've been lifted up and pulled out of the water. I can't wait to see how this part of the journey plays out. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments, and that's all we have for public comments today. Appreciate your feedback that you provide. The board really respects citizen feedback out here, and one of the board priorities is to engage with our community and to be a visible presence in our schools. But we have 50-plus schools, and board members cannot be there at all our schools, and the way we get the feedback is for parents to come and share the feedback that's happening in the school. So thank you, and if you checked the box that said you wanted to be contacted by administration, somebody would contact you. Thank you. Moving on. Special reports and board member reports. So I'll look to my board colleagues who wants to go first, and Director Bankus.
Thank you. Following up, it kind of seems like a segue to what the last comment that we heard. Many of you may know, but I want to make sure that I spotlight that, given the results of the last CMAS testing, Chapita Elementary, Bristol Elementary, Academy ACL, Steele, have all been recognized in the top 25 in the region for their proficiency in reading. Six District 11 elementary schools have been recognized as the best in math, and those schools are Chapita, Steele, Academy ACL, Rudy, Bristol, and Stratton. And as we've talked from this diocese before, it's not only about academic achievement, but it's also about growing our children socially, emotionally, academically, and building resilience and creating strength in them to carry on as they make plans for their future. So thank you to all of those schools, and thank you to all the schools I didn't mention, because I'm convinced that each and every principal, each and every teacher, each and every staff member comes to school each and every day to make sure that they're making the best educational program for the children who walk through their doors. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Director Bankus. Thank you for mentioning some of those schools, and Superintendent Gall sent out, was, was that district spotlight? What was the... D11 insights? And he has acknowledged some of the schools there, too, and one of the schools that was in the top 3% in growth was Jenkins Middle School, too, in math, I think. So kudos to all the schools. Next, looking at my board colleagues, any other board member reports? Okay. Marcella, is Director Loma also joined us? No? Okay. Okay, so... Okay, Superintendent Gall said that there are some technology issues, and he may be there, but he's not able to get in, so. Director Daniels, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
I wanted to share a little bit about the Kenneth Burnley induction at the Milton E. Probie. Yes, thank you.
That's right. On cue.
Yeah, on cue. So I would love to get the name of the, the book. I read this book years ago, absolutely had to go to the library and find out more, so thank you for giving me my own personal copy for it. And it also is part of the history, as you mentioned. I needed to know a little bit more about what D11 was all about as a new resident to this city, in addition to wanting to see where we've come from. And it's amazing, they still, the library downtown still has the amount of students. I mean, it's so well documented of how they got started, the, the district, the growth, it's amazing. So thank you for being here tonight, but also got another piece of history by attending the Kenneth Burnley induction on Friday of last week. I am so grateful that there are different organizations in the community that can offer insight to what we have in this district. And Kenneth Burnley is dearly revered for being a superintendent for 13 years here, and I didn't realize that his son was an educator at Adams Elementary, and I subbed for his class, and I had no idea who he was. And I'm thinking, oh, and gee, the history that's in this place is amazing. But one of the beautiful things he said, his son gave us insight to his dad, he made everyone feel that they were welcomed, and his biggest comment, or I would say mantra, "keep the main thing the main thing." That was huge. Absolutely needed to hear that, and I'm so grateful that we have, I have something for the rest of my time here. Keep the main thing the main thing. And if you don't know what the main thing is, go find out what the main thing is, and then when you figure it out, keep the main thing the main thing. Love that. Thank you. it out, keep the main thing the main thing. Love that. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Daniels. Director Bankus was there, and I was there at the same event Friday, and thank you for sharing. And I shared some of the pictures here that I took from that event, and our Palmer High School chamber singers were there, and they did an amazing job. And if you go back to the previous slide, Ms. Hidalgo, Ms., Director Daniels talked about the main thing. Superintendent Burnley's main thing was student achievement. So, he kept the main thing the main thing, and he was awarded the National Superintendent of the Year in nineteen ninety-three. Those are some additional things. It was also good to see several district staff represented there, including Ms. Hidalgo there, and several of our ex-board members were out there too, supporting this induction along with his family. Yeah, and Ms. Peterson was there too. So, and she was there with the family right up there in that picture where we, where Mr. Burnley's family was acknowledged. You're dressed in yellow there, right there. Yeah. So, thank you. Thank you. Director Nelson.
Thank you all for being here tonight, and thank you for those who came up and spoke, giving us insight into what's going on in our schools and our community. Appreciate your time and effort. I wanted to also highlight that last week, several board members attended the fentanyl awareness roundtable hosted by Congressman Doug Lamborn, and there was several participants on the panel from sheriffs, police departments, the DA, a story from a father who lost two children to a surprising fentanyl experience. And one of the things that was highlighted by the El Paso County Coroner was that fentanyl is a hundred times more powerful than morphine and fifty times more than heroin. And I just want to give a shout out to District 11 as we have the Fake and Fatal Program that has been initiated over the course of the past year, and just the effort that's being put into raising awareness to this scary epidemic that's hitting Colorado Springs across the nation. And so, just thank you to those of you that were a part of that campaign and just as we continue to raise awareness. So, just wanted to share that as a board, we want to do what we can to inform our students and our families and help, help our students understand the dangers that are out there. And now, turning to a lighter subject, you know, several of us have attended the open houses at many schools over the course of the last couple of weeks. There's more to come. I'm not sure if they're posted on the D-11 website, all of the dates and times, if there's one location that community members can go and look up schools in their area. I'm getting an odd yes, great. So, if you want to check that out, please check out our website, and just thank you to the staff that have come back, just so excited and energized. I know I attended the Saban Welcome Back Morning where there was a red carpet, and parents and staff lined the hall just cheering, welcoming the students, and it was just such a great breath of fresh air that we could have this energy in, in the school. So, thank you for everyone, for all your hard work and making our start to the school year a successful one. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate that, and really want to emphasize, and the fentanyl awareness that you talked about, several board members were there, and district was represented too. Our students sometimes go and purchase pills not knowing what they are, and they are thinking that these are caffeine pills that's going to keep them up at nights studying for an exam, but these pills are laced with fentanyl, and even a small dosage of it could prove to be fatal. And listening to a parent out there share what happened to his child, two of his kids that lost their lives by taking these pills, it was heart-wrenching. So, this is a conversation we, as a school board, are having and proactively addressing in our Midland High Schools with the use of Narcan, and we encourage parents to have this conversation with their students too, with their kids too. Thank you. Any further comments from the board? Okay, I have a couple of comments. I want to wrap it up. Some of the comments that I wanted to make have already been addressed, so it's good. I can make mine go a little bit. I wanted to, I was at the Dority High School, and I see our athletic director in the back up there. I was at the Dority High School 5K cross-country scrimmage event at Monument Valley Park, and about fifteen to twenty schools from all around the region participated, and I initially went there just to cheer our students, but there was a story behind this event, and I got to hear from it from Mr. Knoll out there, and he talked about the Never Alone Foundation, and this was about Dr. Alex, and I'm not going to pronounce his last name because I'm going to butcher it, but he adopted three kids, and he and his wife adopted three kids, and some of them were Dority students, Mr. Knoll? No, they were not Dority students. But tragically, ten years back, he lost his wife and all three of his adopted students, adopted girls in a flooding accident. But Dority, out of that tragic event, something good came out of it, and that is the Never Alone Foundation, which supports adoption of kids from, which supports parents who want to adopt kids from other countries. So, it was wonderful to see Sparta come together and support this event, and the kids and the schools were behind it. And Superintendent Gall, what's missing in that picture is you running out there, okay, because I got several comments about, oh, Superintendent Gall, why isn't he here? We heard that he's a runner. So, word is out that you are a cross-country runner, so one of these days, you got to be out there, running with them. So, and Ms. Hidalgo, if you go to the next picture, I want to give a shout out to Coach Dun Sing out there. He is an awesome cross-country coach out there, and he is the one that's putting this together for his students out there. And having, we saw another amazing Dority teacher up here. These teachers make a difference in these students' lives, and he has been working with students even all through summer. They report in July for two hours of running, and he's been working with them, and what an amazing positive influence Coach Dun Sing is, and he is part of promoting this Never Alone Foundation. So, thank you for that, too. And lastly, I want to talk about the open houses too, and so many stories to share. There was a picture that I took out of Dority as the kids were getting ready to go into their opening day of school, and we had the Dority crew out there shouting out welcoming slogans and phrases out there for the kids, just hyping them up to be a Spartan. And I got to visit Freedom Scott, Chapita, Jackson, Edison, Galileo, Penrose, Grant, Rudy, Jenkins, Audubon, and Dority, and every school had an amazing story out there, welcoming our kids back into schools. There was such a positive energy out there, talking to parents and staff out there, students being welcomed in the red carpet on the opening day of school, making them feel special, wanted in their schools. And I've always of the belief when we, and the, and just keep the picture up there too. And when Mr. Johnson talked about the same thing, when students feel appreciated and cared for and loved, they are going to exceed their potential. So, that's what I saw in our schools on opening day, positive message. And this picture, I wanted to kind of briefly talk about Ms. Lewis, who I ran into in Grant, and she is holding a picture of herself in first grade, and now she teaches first grade at Grant Elementary in the same classroom where she was a student out there, okay? And that's her on the first day of school in that classroom, and she was so excited that she's come full circle back to the same classroom where she was a student. And that's just one story that I'm sharing. There are, we were at Saban today, and two other parents were talking about, two other teachers were talking about how they went back to Saban, and that's where they graduated from. So, that spirit and attachment to our D-11 schools, that's something that's immeasurable. So, it was good to see the excitement, and after the challenges of the last two years, parents and staff were excited to welcome our kids to hopefully a normal school year. So, and lastly, I want to thank Devra and her team too. They've done an amazing job capturing some of the pictures, and Superintendent Gall has been there everywhere, and we had some, a couple of citizen comments that reflected how appreciative our community is to have the superintendent visible in our schools, engage with our students, engage with our parents. And Devra's team has been there with him, capturing every one of those occasions. So, they did an amazing job, and some of those pictures are shared on social media, and so, you are really, they make you look really appealing. A picture paints a thousand words, so some of those pictures paint an awesome picture of what's happening in our schools. And, you know, it's good to know that some of those great things are happening in our schools. So, I think there are some more open houses tomorrow, especially in our middle schools, so I encourage our families and community to find out which are those schools that have open houses tomorrow. Please attend some of those. And the last thing, last thing, really, I want to provide the feedback is the board did have a retreat last week, and we got about three hours to spend in a productive conversation with the superintendent, and we got to figure out some of the objectives that we want to accomplish over the next six months and a year. So, it was a really productive conversation, and we plan on having another retreat soon to finish the conversation that happened at that retreat. That's all I have. Thank you. Superintendent's report. Mr. Gall?
Dr. Mel Packman, the board. Thank you. I'll try and be brief. I'm super excited that we were able to celebrate the work of Bristol tonight, and you continue to hear this theme of schools and individuals, staff members, community members, and particularly students being known. That is our goal this year, is that we are known. We can own our outcomes and our successes if we are all known. So, I tasked the executive cabinet coming into school opening a week and a half ago to make sure that every one of our schools was known and attended to for school opening. So, if I could just get executive cabinet to stand up quickly and give each other a pat on the back. We got to each one of our schools on the first two days of school opening. Some of those schools we got to more than once because some of them did require some additional supports, but that is the role of central office to support the needs of schools, and you should see more of that as the year goes on. So, thank you all to my first team for being able to deliver on my vision very clearly in support of the vision and the direction of the Board of Education. I want to start with some more thank yous. If I could get the, the members of the District 11 150 Kickoff Celebration Committee to come forward and be acknowledged. If you are here, come on up. Now, I'm going to make y'all come up because I'm going to read about all of you, and then I have a gift for everyone. So, we've talked a lot about 150 and this idea of destination to excellence, that excellence is what we do, not just today, it's what we've done before, that we will learn from our past to inform our future. We don't have all the answers yet, but we seek them, and so we are always appreciative of all comments from our public, whether they are pointed or they are celebratory. But here's a chance for us to celebrate. I'll read them in order. I told them the lineup in the order it was printed, but they didn't follow directions. I'm, I'm actually thankful that they didn't follow directions because they created an incredible event on their own with their own vision. This has all happened well before even, I think, the idea that I had the opportunity to come work here. So, first and foremost, Chris Knoll, the district athletic director and his team for supplying the stadium, Gary Berry Stadium, Ross Simmons, Yana Ulrich, Tora Turans, for helping set up the booths, cording off the street, for the food trucks, hurrah for food trucks, and for the can-do work ethic that helped accommodate the variety of requests that happened that night. Secondly, Laura Lee McDaniel, the visual performing arts facilitator, and Jen Lennon in the district visual performing arts department as well, for helping to schedule the student performances, reaching out to fine arts parents and sponsors for being amazing emcee for the event, Decades of Fashion Show, and also just this idea that it was really about students celebrating 150 years. If you hadn't paid attention to what was happening on stage, I believe we have video of all that. We'd love to make some of those snippets available on social media. To Kathy Only in Student Success and Wellness Department for contributing to the task force planning and helping make the event a success, that everybody felt welcome in our community. Paige Carn, one of our newest members of the team and our marketing coordinator for marketing the event, taking photos at the event, and also helping setting up booths. You can see, we probably need a separate setup committee next time. Steve Jessup for Auditorium Manager for setting up the sound stage for the students so we could hear them everywhere. I didn't make it all the way around the track. There were so many people to talk to, but I could always hear and see what was happening. Catherine Ritchie, our district on Budswoman, for connecting the local restaurants and getting gift cards and raffle prizes, and getting student councils to help arrange for student volunteers and also work as runners. Luann DeKevla, the district's engaged administrator, anything and everything that happens in partnership with District 11 and Colorado Springs goes through Luann, and so many of the folks that you saw there are a credit to the longstanding relationships she's developed. Tyler Horton, Assistant Construction Supervisor in Facilities Department for all those cables, chairs, stages, all those pieces of equipment. You can see, this was a big event. The media production team, Rex, Derek, Justin, Mike, and Barry, who are in and around me at all times and visibly, always supporting the messaging for District 11. We have the best comms and public-facing image in the, in the greater El Paso County area. Marilyn Pitcher, the Administrative Assistant and Communications Marketing Director, got the worst sunburn over the week leading into that event, so please, let's get her a good dermatologist. All the logistics, the large photo opportunities that can be found in the stadium, putting together the gift bags, all those things are very detailed. David Allison and all the security personnel, if you didn't feel safe and surrounded by welcoming arms of our security team, please, next time, shake their hand. They're there to make it a great event. And Brenda McKinney, the District 11 ESP President, for contributing ideas to the event and task force, planning meetings, and for helping set up and during the event. Brenda is everywhere and anywhere, and so we're happy to have her. So, for all these members, I make my first of the 150 celebrations of excellence for this 150th year. I will acknowledge you all by giving you my 150th celebration coin. Devra already has a couple, and there should be a couple more for the other people that weren't here, if you could hand them on my behalf. Thanks. All right, one more round of applause for the 150th celebration. Okay, my spotlight each, each week is going to include a school spotlight. It's going to have a staff shout out, but we're also going to bring students into the mix here as well. We have the most courageous, most articulate students that I have seen, and this is now the fourth district where I've had a senior role. And I could not be more excited for the first two days of school to have had the chance to walk around and just really cold-call kids and put them on camera and ask them questions. And if you haven't watched the social media pieces that we've put out, you should watch and listen to some of the videos that are out there, because our kids tell our story better than anyone. So, we'll just go through a couple of slides. I don't want to make it long, so I'm just going to give a couple of highlights. Bonnie at Edison, what a tremendous young woman. She said friends and fun more times in a sentence than any ELA teacher would ever allow, but I can tell you as a district superintendent, she can say friends and fun six times in a sentence and not get marked down. So, she was super excited to be there on our first day. Next slide. Two young ladies, Alicia and Alina at Man. They were ambassadors, eighth-grade ambassadors. One of the things I love is when we give our students a chance to lead, and so they were there on that first day for sixth graders, helping sixth graders navigate the hallways and understand what it meant to be a middle schooler at Man. And they were picking up on themes. Again, I say that every student should be known. I got that from actually reading in all the comments when I was interviewing to be the superintendent. That's not my idea that I carry from city to city. It's certainly one of the ideals that I live by, but it's what our students are asking for. They're asking to be recognized. And they talked about how great it was getting to know people. Alicia actually said it was a super great day, and that's just a great thing to say. What a super great day. And I love this idea that Alina commented on how strong it was for her to be a role model as an eighth grader. Next slide. Next slide. I've spoken a couple of times about Sam, but I just want to remind everybody that our students have different needs than what our adult memories are of our own high school experience. Every time I see Sam, every time I see a high school student, I am reminded of that. It is not for them to hear about what my homecoming was like, or what my championship game was like, or what my prom was like. We have to allow our students to articulate to us what their experience should be in our high schools. And they're starting to get their voices very loud and very local, and I'm excited for that. Next slide. And Josie at North Middle School, Josie told me that she is already ready to go to Palmer. Her sister went to North, that's why she went to North. Her sister went to Palmer, she's going to go to Palmer. There's a family legacy. She can't wait to have the teachers that her sister had when she went to Palmer. So when we have students that are celebrating the longevity and the excellence of our teachers, that means that for just a minute, we need to stop being on one side or the aisle or the other, and remember that we should all be celebrating our teachers in District 11. Next slide. Cheyenne at Odyssey, I really wanted to highlight some of the really strong learners that we have over in our early college opportunities. She came from Swiger Middle School. She said that Odyssey came to her school and showed her what an early college experience would be like. She's leaning in, she wants to get done early, so she can help contribute and give back to all the things that her mother gave to her. She told me that she was nervous and that she had social anxieties, and I'd love to have her up here sitting on the microphone every day. Because she tells a story of what we do at Odyssey and larger at Roy J. Wasson Academic Campus better than any of the adults in the district can. She talked about having staff that was passionate, compassionate, and motivating her. She said it was much harder than she thought it was going to be, but it was the staff and the teachers that helped her regain the motivation to be as successful as she is right now. And then finally, Escavante also over at Roy J. Wasson in, in this idea of rebuilding trust. He told me that high school wasn't for him. He had a real struggle in his comprehensive high school experience, and he was so excited that he was able to find Biju where people and teachers were stopping him and asking him, what did he need at any given moment? So instead of asking him to live up to an expectation that he wasn't motivated towards, he was having teachers lean in to rebuild that motivation and that trust. And he's ready to graduate so he can open up a restaurant or a food truck, and I'll be the first one in line. So how about a round of applause for our students in District 11? I pinched myself again this morning on the way in. I'm excited to be here, and let's get going with the rest of the board meeting. Thank you.
So, thank you Superintendent Gall. Over and over again, you know, as a parent, why I'm here and the rest of the board will agree with me is about the students that you shared with. And having that engagement with the students and listening to them and the students feeling valued and appreciated, it makes all the difference. So thank you for sharing that. Any questions or comments for Director Bankus?
I would like to add our own family story to this last student who spoke. My son is a graduate of the Biju School. And I'm, he's an adult now, he's done very well. Thank you to all the people who were caring at that time. And I'm gratified to know that that legacy continues to this day. So thank you for highlighting the Biju School.
Any other comments or questions about the superintendent's report? So one feedback that I want to provide you Superintendent Gall from the board side. The board has expressed an interest in visiting all our schools. So that is a priority for the board and, or at least the majority of the board that has agreed. So the board has talked about this, and we've come up with a list of, again, assigned schools for every board member. So if you could, if that has not been shared with the principals, if that could be shared with the principals. So ideally, the idea is that those schools, the board is the representative for those schools. And we would like if, depending on the board member's schedule, to participate in school events and activities and come and report back to the board periodically about some of the good things that are happening in the schools and also some of the concerns that may come up going forth. So if principals can share some of the events or the PTA meetings or the SAC meetings that are happening in the schools, that would be really helpful for the board to know what's happening. And I think you guys have the list, so if you can just share it with the principals. And to the board, if your work or personal schedule does not allow you to visit assigned school, please let us know as soon as possible, then we can, Vice President Jorgensen can assign the school to another board member. With that, Treasurer Nelson, can you please make the motion to adopt the consent items?
I move that the Board of Education adopt all consent items as designated in the agenda. The consent items are C2 approval of the August 10, 2022 regular meeting minutes, C3 approval of the personnel recommendations for August 24, 2022.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Marcella Rollcall, please.
Dr. Bankus?
Aye.
Mrs. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Jorgensen?
Aye.
Dr. Mel Packham?
Aye.
Mrs. Nelson?
Aye.
Mrs. Saath?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the consent items have been adopted. Action items, there are no contract awards. And the second action item, budget transfers, appropriations and FTE approvals. Director Daniels, can you please make the motion for action item D2?
Yes, thank you. I move that the Board of Education approves an additional 0.5 FTE funded by a contingency transfer of $71,433.16, bringing the total approved FTE up to 1.0 for an assistant principal at Spark Online Academy.
Second.
Moved and seconded. This item is new. Superintendent Gall, could you share with us some information on this request?
Yeah, if Dr. Comfort can come forward. And just, I want to apologize to the board for not quite understanding some of the ways we approve FTE. And so this has been a learning process for me. We have a strong argument. We would have done this in a little more thoughtful way to engage with you over time. But I have Dr. Comfort to give you the ins and outs of our rationale for Spark Online going forward.
Good evening, Board of Education. Thanks so much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. As mentioned, I'm here tonight to request that the board approve a change in allocation for Spark Online from 0.5 assistant principal to a 1.0. Our current plan is to fund that position through ESER. That would give us a two-year window to allow Spark Online to do the appropriate planning and program implementation and give them time to grow their enrollment at the end of those two years after planning and programming are in place. If their enrollment does not fall in line with our normal assistant principal ratios, then that, that position would not move to the general fund. So as we know, Spark Online launched last year, and they really serve two purposes for us. First and foremost, they brought D11 into the K8 multi-district online space. This is a space that our surrounding districts have already been in and established, and we've been losing kids to over the years. So Spark Online gave us that opportunity, and they did a really solid job with that. Secondly, as we all know, in the middle of the pandemic, we needed an opportunity, a safe opportunity for students who didn't feel comfortable being in their brick and mortar school to, to attend an online school. Spark Online, at least for elementary school, was our only option, and I think they did a beautiful job. They managed changes in enrollment of hundreds of students in, in a matter of just a couple of days with really very minor setbacks. So now the data is suggesting, obviously, as we know, as we've termed out of the pandemic, that the need for the safe learning environment for students who would traditionally serve in brick and mortar schools is not as great. But we know that the market is still there for our blended online, multi-district online program. We've also added to our requests of Spark. We've asked them to build in a high school program, which is now launching in ninth and 10th grade this year. We're also going to be extending an ask of them that they add a homeschool program next year. These are programs, again, that exist in our surrounding districts, are vastly popular, serve a lot of students, and are very fiscally responsible. So as an example, for a homeschool program, what will cost the district? 20 cents on the dollar, we will get 50 cents in funding. So we know, and we know that there's a significant market for that. I ran that program in, in another district with over 500 students. And so, so we're looking to really move towards the 1.0 FTE again for this two-year window to allow the administrative support that's necessary to allow Spark to plan and implement these programs in a high-quality way. This, this request is not related to their current enrollment. This is to give them the structure and support to build and launch these programs so that we have programs for students to line up for. We can't necessarily expect just the principal and her staff to do this just as kind of a side gig. We need to give them the resources necessary to allow them to build these programs so that students in District 11 have the choices that they have in other districts. So just as, as a quick reminder, we're talking about Spark Online serving as a multi-district online school. That means they can serve students anywhere in the state of Colorado. We serve students all the way south as, I believe, last year, Alamosa, and all the way north is Sterling. And so we will continue to provide that, that offering. We have extended a high school model, and we plan to extend on that each and every year by adding a grade level. And then we will be bringing in the homeschool program next year, which we think will be a big benefit to the district. So I open it to the board for any questions.
Thank you. Director Bankus?
I'm not clear on how the homeschool brings 50 cents on the dollar. Could you give us some more information?
Yeah. So, so really, if you, if you look at statute, the way those programs typically run is one day a week of enrichment programming, but the state funds us at a 50% rate. And so what we can have, let's say, 20 kids every single day in a class, and it will really just cost us a single classroom. But we're going to get, if that's 100 kids, we're going to get funding as if we have 50 full-time students, when really we're only using one classroom.
These are for homeschool families that choose to partner with an online facility for curriculum and, and for enrichment for classes that they can't provide at home.
Director Art?
Thank you. There was originally a 0.5 allocation. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So the, two questions come to mind. One, will a whole position be funded out of ESER funds? Is that what is anticipated?
Yes, the, the plan is to move the entire funding to ESER.
Okay. And then the second question is, for the amount that is being asked for, is that half? Again, what we've, what is already funded? Or is that, is that an equivalent amount, I guess?
Yeah, I, I believe there was an error in terms of, by adding a half, I think, I believe the salary and benefits showed that we were adding a whole. And so I, I think, I, I believe that the, the finance department sent a correction email on that earlier today. But really, we would be moving that full amount to, to ESER to include, at this point, because there's not a person identified, the average salary for an assistant principal and the full benefit package, we would adjust to actuals after that person is hired.
All right, thank you.
Director Art, are you convinced? I mean, you seem like you had a follow-up question.
Not that there isn't a person identified.
Yeah, I'll, I'll correct the record. And again, acknowledging the fact that I was out in front of the board and understanding the approval of FTE, this came to me as a contingency request. I have interviewed and identified an individual for this position that was actually built into the consent agenda. When I recognized that I was in front of the board's approval of the position, I removed that consent agenda item as a personnel action pending the decision of the board on whether or not you would move forward with a 1.0 FTE.
Director Art, I apologize. I, I did not mean to, to state that there wasn't a person identified. I meant in the, in the salary and benefit amount that you received, that was not connected to that individual, that was connected to an average. So I apologize for misspeaking.
Okay, thank you.
The first salary that came forward was the average salary, which also had been miscalculated. And so we're learning as we go on how it is that we add. The reason to decide to move this to an ESER fund opportunity is I do want us to be accountable to even our own strategy decisions. This is not an FT, this is not an enrollment, current enrollment-driven action. Many FTE requests that come forward to the board to include the pre-K initiative that we've been pushing are driven by demand, known demand. This is for us to make a strategic bet that says, if we build it, they will come. We have accountability in ESER to ensure that we don't continue to spend good money after bad. We have to reconcile those dollars every year. This is, keeps us competitive with both District 49 and 20, who have robust multi-district online schools and homeschooling opportunities. And it allows us growth opportunity. We have signals from several outside agencies of interest of how they can continue to partner with our district, and this would give us a mechanism to be able to do that.
Thank you. I, I know that Spark is doing great things, and they're a great school, and I appreciate the investment there. So, and especially if we're going to invest in further growth. Thank you.
Director Nelson?
So I just want to clarify the, because there have been some emails just trying to verify the numbers. What's on board docs is the correct amount, but we're now pulling it into ESER. So do we still need to approve it as, I'm just wondering if what we have on board docs, what we're actually approving right now is accurate, if now it's been pulled to ESER? I'm not sure what the process is.
I would argue, Chris, if you can comment, that if we made the decision late this afternoon to offer this to you as ESER, I'm not sure it's a required vote from the board.
That's what I'm wondering. I don't know what the process is.
But it was on board docs, and so I wanted to make sure we had the conversation.
Yeah, I'm glad for that.
Yeah, that's the clarity that we need. Do we still need to approve the increase of 0.5 FTE to 1 FTE even though it's being funded through ESER?
Yes, because the intention is for it to be longer than one period. You know, if we're growing next year and we need this, it'll be more than a 12-month period. And before ESER approves it, you need to approve it.
So are all the documents that were originally listed as it being our contingency fund, I just, I just want to make sure that tonight what we're approving, we're not going to realize, maybe we'll have to approve it again later, like with the correct documentation. I just.
So, yeah, there is some confusion here. The ESER funding, does it run for the next year or next two years?
ESER 3 goes through September 2024.
Okay, September 2024.
Correct.
But this position, we are talking about not, okay, that will get us two years. I got it. Do you have any follow-up questions on this?
I don't think so. I think I'm good. Thank you.
So we are, so the board is clear about this. We are asking for an approval, a full-time assistant principal from ESER funding. And this type of request falls under the ESER grant requirements and stuff. ESER grant allows this to fund the assistant principal?
I didn't submit, have anybody submit anything to CDE to approve because I needed this transaction to happen first.
Okay. Okay. And this assistant principal then is aware that the funding could run out in a couple of years? And the position of the board is when grant funding runs out, that unless they demonstrate that the position warrants it, yeah?
Yes.
We may not be renewing that.
I apologize. Yes, we have notified that, that this would be grant funding for two years. And if, if the, the enrollment shows that the position needs to continue, then it would continue. If it doesn't, then it would sunset.
Okay. Do we have a current enrollment for Spark Online?
We do.
What's the current enrollment?
Our current enrollment, as of today in Power School, we have, we still have about a dozen pending enrollments, but we're at 255 students right now. Our original goal this year for launching our high school was 50 students. We're currently sitting at 43 with a few still waiting to be processed. So we think by October 1, we're going to hit our goal of 50 students in, in the high school program.
Okay. So it's 255 students includes that 43 high school students?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The original projection was 333?
It was.
Okay. So we are below projection for, at this time at least. The concern that I have is at the last time, when the staffing allocation came out, there were considerable amount of staff allocated to Spark Online with the intention that this program is going to have students out there.
Sure.
About 25 FTEs staff was allocated, and now you have 255 students. So I just want to make sure, when I'm visiting schools, the concern I have is there are schools in fourth and fifth grade with 30-plus students. This allocation runs out here like 10 students in a classroom. Is that the intended goal of this program, to have eight to 10 students in a classroom?
Yes, let me address a few things there, President Mel Packham. Thank you for the question. I, I think first of all, we, we have to, we have to separate staff that are foundational to them planning to build programs, and then the, the staff that are, like any other school. school, we need to align to, to the ratios. So as an example, if there are grade levels right now at Spark that are overstaffed, if we are confronted with a position that we were confronted in last year, where we have openings in other buildings and we can't fill those with, with teacher vacancies, they would be eligible to go through that teacher transfer process the same way that teachers were brought to Spark last year. So, so they're not immune to, to that adjustment. Likewise, there's, they're not going to be immune to a, a cleaner projection next year. If you recall, when we did projections for Spark last year, it was in January and February when we were still really in the thick of, of not knowing. Now, the, the principal there and I made dozens and dozens of phone calls to families, but we, we know that, that a lot of families, you know, made different decisions as the year progressed, as changes in the pandemic occurred. So Spark is not immune to having to adjust to the staffing ratio like every, every other school. We're not protecting their entire staff. With that said, there were some investments that you graciously approved to launch that high school that won't be continued investments. So now that we have a counselor at the high school, we don't have to hire another counselor when we add 11th grade. Now that we have a math teacher in the high school, we don't have to add another math teacher when we add another grade level. So that, that, that separation will shrink over time, and if it doesn't, then their staffing ratio will adjust like every other school. This assistant principal is critical to giving them the structural support they need to build the programs that, that we're asking them to build and launch. And so it's kind of, in my mind, it's, it's two separate buckets.
Okay. Thanks for that clarity, and that does make sense. But knowing that if the student enrollment in that school does not justify additional teaching staff, that that is going to be something internally that you are going to address along with Superintendent Goll, that's satisfactory to me.
And that's consistent with how we treat all our schools with under enrollment. We're excited that many of our conversations right now are about over enrollment.
Yep. Yeah, thank you. The nagging question that I have behind my, you know, right now is, as we turn the corner and return to somewhat a normal condition, is there still a demand in K through five for an online school? And maybe there is, maybe some parents want to. Or is this enrollment indicative that our parents are choosing to return to our in-person neighborhood schools?
Sure, I'd love to respond to that real quick, President Malpakum, if I may. It, it, it's both. Obviously, we had some families coming out of the pandemic that were there because they, they didn't feel safe being in a brick and mortar. They have returned to their school. We also have a big signal that this, this type of programming is necessary. That's why it's been established in other districts for a number of years with high levels of success. And so right now, when we're talking to families who are considering enrolling in Spark, and some of those families are and some of them are not, the, the conversation is not, well, if you don't choose Spark, are you going to choose a traditional school? It's, if I don't choose Spark, I'm going to Journey K-8 in D-20, I'm going to Aspire in Harrison District 2, or I'm going to, they have a really fancy title in District 49. So the decision is not to return to a brick and mortar. That family has made their mind up that they are doing hybrid online learning. We want them to choose us. And so that's why we need that program to be there. What we might find out is that there is less of a call for a, a K through 2, and we have smaller sections, and we have more sections in 4th through 8th. We absolutely will likely find that out this year as we're returning to normal, and our numbers are not inflated by what's going on.
Thank you again for that clarity. I don't mean to be repetitive on this, and I agree with you that there is a demand out there, and we want to be able to provide the support for the parents that are choosing. Otherwise, they may go to other options. When charter schools come in front of us, the question that we ask is, what is the threshold that is going to help them get the return on the investment? And that's the same thing out here. There is a threshold. If only five kindergarten students want to need, is it budget fiscally responsible on our part for, for, for the board to have a kindergarten online school if only there is demand from five parents? That's where the, it's a conversation for a different time.
Absolutely.
Director Bankus.
I wanted to ask, within our executive level, do we have homeschool services currently provided to our community from the executive group? Okay, I'm seeing heads nod, so I guess we do.
We, we, we have a, we have a, a homeschool office where they can, they can fulfill their, their obligations to become a homeschool family. We don't necessarily have homeschool programming. And so that's what this would be. This would be programming that families from all across the region can choose. They choose to sign their letter of intent to homeschool in District 11, really regardless if they in District 11 or not, and they participate in that program. It's usually one day a week. It's usually enrichment-based. It's usually highly engaging, and people love it. And then the district, like I said, gets 50% funding for those students even though they're only technically in our building one day a week, because the remainder of the week, they're, they're homeschooling. And obviously, we would want to provide resources and support to help families in that process.
So am I understanding that this position then at Spark would be the clearinghouse for District 11 for parents who want to homeschool?
I, I, I think the, the clearinghouse would likely still live in Dr. Colicky's office because that's where the paperwork resides. But I think this position would oversee the programming and connection with those families to ensure that they're aware of the offerings that the district provides and the programming that we provide so that they can bring them into that program.
Yeah, and so I just have to interject a story here. I'm out and about in the building all the time, and when someone comes up to me with a single piece of paper, I've learned what that is. It's a notice of intent. And so I had a young mom with two young delightful boys. One of them was named Austin, I forgot the other one's name, but I remember Austin had a great little handshake. And she met me on the back steps, I was on my way, I think, to go see John over in IT. And she had the single piece of paper. And I said, hi, can I help you? And she was looking actually for Dr. Colicky's office and enrollment, because she had her notice of intent to withdraw her kids from District 11 because she was a homeschooling mom who had an excellent partnership where she was getting her, her specific work that she needed through District 49's multi-district online school portal. And so I took that piece of paper, I walked to David's office, and I pulled Melissa in because Melissa Andrews came from District 49. And I said, how, how do I get people to give that piece of paper to another district so they can come to District 11? Because I didn't want to lose that mom and those two kids. They were delightful. They couldn't wait to just go on, and the kids had the greatest things to say about the balance that they were getting from Monday, Wednesday, Friday with mom, and then Tuesday, Thursday through the online school that District 49 offered them. And so this is an semblance of those. We are certainly a district in transition, exiting COVID, trying to figure out what we want to be. And so my ask of the board is for an FTE with accountability measures as defined by ESER to allow us to grow our online school into something more than what it has served in the past. I believe that it can bring in hundreds of, hundreds of enrollment numbers in the next two years at very little cost to the district, where we're getting the 30, 40, 50 cents on the dollar, with scalability that is not as restricted as what we find in a brick and mortar experience.
Thank you. You still have a question, Director Nelson?
Just a clarification on something you mentioned of the 50 cents on the dollar them coming into our building. Are they actually coming to have enrichment on-site, or is it through online?
It, it could be, it could be either. In, in many cases, depending on the district, it's in-person or online. We can do a hybrid of both. Something else to note is Spark, you know, with, with 250 students, operates in a very small footprint. They have three classrooms. But I know that they would be, they're able already to negotiate that, to provide programming options. And so I think we would fine-tune that to different parent groups, where I'm sure we would have some families that want that in-person experience, that hands-on enriching experience. And we would have some families that would be looking for maybe some more academic programming through an online program. So we don't want to, we don't want to over-commit ourselves to anything because we want to keep everything available. But we are, there is a population there that we can serve. I think one other thing to note, it just happens to be by luck that this is located in the northwest part of the district, that is a heavy part of our city, that has a heavy homeschooling population. And so I think that there could be a natural benefit to like, hey, my homeschool enrichment program is right up the road. And I think it can, it could continue to connect us to our community.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we had a healthy discussion on this subject, and Superintendent Goll, what he said that stood out to me is the accountability measures that are in place to track that this position is going to in fact turn into the results, the enrollment numbers that he is projecting. And we have also the capacity to tap into a segment of population that we've not been able to provide supposed to in the homeschooling parents. So, and it's got the potential for scalability too with the minimum investment. So with that, seeing no further questions, roll call please, Marcella.
Dr. Bankus?
No.
Mrs. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Jorgensen?
Aye.
Dr. Malpakum?
Aye.
Mrs. Nelson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion passes. Thank you, Superintendent Goll. The next action item, appointment of staff assistants to the Board of Education. Since we don't have Director Loma, Director Jorgensen, could you please make the motion?
I move that the Board of Education appoint Christine Odom as Assistant Board Treasurer.
Second.
Moved and seconded, and this is a normal board item that comes usually at this time of the year where the board appoints an Assistant Board Treasurer. Any questions on this? I don't think we have a presentation or anything on this topic. Okay, it's added responsibility now to you, Ms. Odom. Seeing no questions, roll call please, Marcella.
Dr. Bankus?
Aye.
Mrs. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Jorgensen?
Aye.
Dr. Malpakum?
Aye.
Mrs. Nelson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion has been adopted. Moving on to non-action item, policy JKA, use of physical intervention and restraints, regulations, JKAR, and exhibits. This item is new information, Superintendent Goll. I turn it over to you.
I'd like to introduce Dr. Greg X.
Thank you. Mr. Goll, President Malpakum, members of the board, policy JKA, regulation JKAR, and exhibits JKAE1, JKAE2, and JKAE3 are all being updated to align with statutory changes that are a result of House Bill 221376 that was passed, this past May. Colorado law now defines physical restraint as the use of bodily, physical force to involuntary limit an individual's freedom of movement for more than one minute. The prior definition defined physical restraint as the use of bodily, physical force to involuntary limit an individual's freedom of movement for more than five minutes. Just a little bit of background, on August 10, Executive Director Gudwagen did notify all school district leadership that this change had taken place and was now effect, was now part of law. We have changed and incorporated the, this new language into our CPI training. District Behavior Interventionists have been communicating to all special education staff beginning August 10 that this was, that this change had occurred, and we will be sending out another annual reminder on September 6 to all principals that here is the new language and here are the updated forms.
Questions? Director Bankus.
Actually, you've already answered my question. I, I've taken many CPI classes, I've used it in multiple districts, and have found that it adheres to law, and I'm glad that we're going to continue with the program.
Director Jorgensen.
So the main change I saw was five-minute to one-minute hold. Was there, what was the rationale behind that? Is it just new, new research, new regulations coming down, or?
It's just changing the law. I don't know what the intent of the state was at the time of passing that.
Okay, all right. Just wondering, that was the main thing, so thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. So just for clarity, this also did not go through the policy committee like policy changes normally go through the policy committee?
Correct. We wanted to move this quickly so we could get support out to our schools and get the, the new forms out. Our first policy committee is going to be on September 2, so it didn't align with the timing.
Okay. So there is a...
Director Bankus.
Has there been any change at the bottom of the form? The folks who are to receive copies of an incident, have those job titles changed? Do those, do they need to be modified?
We did catch that, and if we, if it's approved this evening, we'll make sure that we make those changes quickly. It's just a, a simple change from Assistant Superintendent to Chief.
Yep.
And I just want to be clear that it's not my intent to supersede committees in the way that we normally do action. I just don't want to wait for committees. This was critically important, as was the transportation policy adjustment we made two weeks ago.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that clarity. There is a request to move this non-action item to action item and adopt it today. So I first need a motion to move this from non-action to action.
I move that we move this, I move that this action, non-action item, we move to an action item, and border those two.
Moved and seconded. Roll call please, Marcella.
Dr. Bankus?
Aye.
Mrs. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Jorgensen?
Aye.
Mr. Malpakum?
Aye.
Mrs. Nelson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ott?
Aye.
So the ayes have it, so this policy JKA and the attached regulations and exhibits have been moved from non-action to action. Now I need a motion to adopt these policies as revised.
I move that we adopt the policies as revised.
Aye.
Moved and seconded, and since we already had the discussion on this, roll call please, Marcella.
Dr. Bankus?
Aye.
Mrs. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Jorgensen?
Aye.
Dr. Malpakum?
Aye.
Mrs. Nelson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the policies as revised have been adopted by the board. Moving on to the next non-action item, Resolution 2023-1, Legislative Liaisons. This item is new information.
Professor Chris Odom?
Yep.
Thank you, Superintendent Goll. Good evening, Board of Education. We do this every year. This is intended to identify staff that you approve to address legislative matters if they get called for a question to clarify. Sometimes a legislator will call and say, hey, please explain how this works, and they get clarification. It happens frequently in the food service world, perhaps in the special ed environment as well. This does, i- i- if there is a future request, what I ask is that if you get, the folks, I'll send an email out if you approve tonight, that if they are contacted by a legislative group to come and testify, that they coordinate to me so we can get the board's position, just to make sure we're in sync. So that's a short overview of the purpose of this resolution. Any questions that I can address?
Thank you. Any questions?
Director Nelson?
I just wondered that we state specific people, and sometimes there's turnover and people move on. So if somebody leaves and we hire someone else, do we have to do this over again?
Yes.
Okay. Just curious. We can't make it generic and just state positions? We have to list the people's names for the future if it happens?
That's absolutely something we can take under advisement, sure.
Thank you. Not related to this question, but I just wanted to ask this of Superintendent Goll too. In the past, if the board had questions about something that's on the legislative agenda, we had somebody at the district that was the assigned person, and that was the previous CFO. Is there somebody in that role? Are you going to take on that role? Is, if a House bill comes up or whatever it is, are we still going, you are going to be the contact person in the district for legislative questions that come up?
I'd like to be able to get back to you on that. Instead of putting interim COO, Chris Odom on the spot there. I know she would step into the space, but I'd like to review the history and the demands. There are plenty of things that I've asked Chris to be able to lead us through, and we'll find the right name for the board.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. One minor error that I noticed out there, I think the area superintendents, they have the names crossed. I think Northeast Schools is Darren Joyner and... I think Northeast Schools is Darren Joyner and Southeast Schools is Sherry Colback. It's the other way around on that, on this page out there. You can just change it. It's just a minor change on this page, okay? So this can move to consent. It doesn't need to move to action, just making sure. Can this move to consent?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have thumbs to move this to consent? Good, thank you. So just make that minor revision and this will come in two weeks as a consented.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
With that, request for new agenda items from the board.
Thank you. I request that the board learn about and discuss this fall's ballot measure that would establish the Healthy School Meals for All program. The goal, that my intent, would be to better understand the potential impact on the district and the students and staff. And I think, I think the program fits neatly with two of our board priorities, student achievement and staff investment. So for those who are unfamiliar with the measure, I'll mention that the measure would establish this program under the State Department of Education to provide free school meals to all students in Colorado public schools and increase wages for employees that prepare and serve food. And we know we've had issues with hiring in Food Nutrition Services, so personally I like that aspect. The funding for the program would come through a lowering of deductions available to those with a taxable income of $300,000 or more. So ideally, I think we would discuss this at a work session and at that point decide if we would like a resolution in support. And I know I mentioned in an email the resolution, but now I'm thinking we should have that conversation first, be more informed as a board. So, and at a minimum, the district and we are more informed. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanna offer that the Food Nutrition Services team would love to be able to present the numbers of meals that we've presented, you know, pre-COVID, during COVID when everything went free, and now some of the challenges that we're feeling in ensuring that all our students have access to quality food. The studies are clear that students who are well-fed are better prepared for an educational experience. And although many families might have needs, might have means to be able to pay for food, a kid who can't find a dollar fifty or two dollars in their pocket is not gonna call home or figure it out, they're just not gonna eat. And so, you know, my personal opinion outside of the policy of the board is this is a sunk cost to education that should have been solved decades ago. We don't ask kids to pay for the air that they breathe or the amount of water that they consume at a water fountain or in a toilet. We have to start thinking that part of our capital infrastructure is food and not how it is that we make food a money generating opportunity for the district.
So Director Art, just to be clear, you're requesting that what Superintendent Gaul suggested, that Food and Nutrition Services provide that report to the board and we can have that report and then go forth after that discussion? Is that a good starting point for what your request is?
I think that... Thank you. That's right. I think that would be part of the equation, if you will. I would be curious what the possible impact on wages might be, if there's cost savings in the long run for us as the program pays for things. We have our own healthy food program that aims to, I believe, connect with local producers and that would be part of this bill as well. So I'm really looking for a rather broad impact understanding. But absolutely, the impact on the students and making sure those kids get fed, that's significant understanding.
So again, for clarity, you want somebody to provide information on this specific ballot measure and how it impacts our school district?
Yes.
Okay. Is that something, so that's a task that we are asking the superintendent and the staff, is somebody can do that?
Well, we'll put something together to be able to have this conversation.
Okay. First, I need to figure out if the board is interested. Do we have four thumbs up for this discussion that Director Art requested? Yes. Okay, so we will try to schedule it as soon as possible at a work session to have this conversation.
Thank you very much.
And to find information about it. Thank you. Director Jorgensen, I accidentally, I'll come back to you. Director Nelson?
Oh, I, I, we wanna take care of students and I, we wanna take care of our people and increase the wages that we're giving our Food and Nutrition Services, but I, I do wanna recognize that this ballot measure could be contentious and as a board, I'm not sure that we should take a position. I wonder if we should stay neutral. What it's asking is that a certain segment of our population is taxed higher in order to pay for this program and I just...
Okay, Director Nelson?
It will be good to...
Yeah, we, we will save that for the work session.
I was gonna say, it would be good to have an understanding of if it passes, what the impact will be on the district, but there was mention of, you know, us doing a resolution and all of that and I just wanted to put it out there that...
Okay.
I'm not sure that that's wise.
If I understood Director Art's request right now, it's not for a resolution. At this point in time, she hasn't made a request for a resolution. It's just to have a discussion about this topic at the work session, at which point in time, we will see if there is interest in the board to adopt a resolution. Do you have any other, are you good, Director Nelson? Director Jorgensen?
Thank you. Yeah, this will stem from the Financial Literacy Resolution that we did in April last year. I would like us to, and this is, we might need to update the information first, but when I spoke with Dan Hoff last spring about our financial literacy as a requirement of our graduate profile, it was not a requirement but a strong suggestion with it somewhat in place here and there at certain schools, depending on who was teaching and what they were teaching. So I would like us to look at having the financial literacy as a requirement piece of our graduate profile so that no matter where our graduates are going, they have a strong sense of personal economics and can understand how to navigate the world of finance, debt and assets and all the things that are applicable to young people going out on their own. So be interested in learning more about what we have in place and how we can make that a requirement for our graduates.
Superintendent Gaul?
Yeah, happy to support that. McKinsey Scott just did a $40 million grant to Junior Achievement locally, so that's a great opportunity for us to double back. I've asked Chief Academic Officer Tamara Acevedo to research that and what the opportunities would be in our existing relationships. So we'll bring that to a work session to understand where fiscal literacy sits in the graduation, where it currently sits in our curriculum and our K-12 experience and how we could bring to the board options to make it part of the graduation profile.
If the board wills.
Right, if the board wills.
Is the board interested in the, having this conversation about fiscal literacy? Okay, so I've got four thumbs up, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So after you, Ms. Acevedo, does the research on this and you are ready, let me know and we can schedule it. Director Bankes?
Yeah, I wanna circle back to Director Nelson. I wanna make sure that when we get the information at the work session on going forward and gathering the information before we go forward on a question about a resolution, that we also include in that packet of information the consequences of suggesting that we encourage our legislators to, to approve this, this measure. I wanna make sure that the, the financial impact on our taxpayers is also included in the information that we get. Thanks.
Okay, you got that? Okay. Thank you. No further request? Okay, thank you. Doing a calendar review, next week, Wednesday, August 31st, it's the fifth Wednesday of the month, but we have a work session scheduled for that day. The topics that we are going to be discussing at, at that work session is going to be looking at the CMAS test scores for the district, the state test scores for the district and for schools. We are also going to be looking at the summer enrichment, summer bridge program and anything and everything about the summer bridge program, the enrollment and all the data on summer, summer, summer bridge. And the last topic was after-school, after-school enrichment programs and update on the after-school enrichment programs that the board approved at 10 schools. Where are they? Are they up and running? And how has that translated into student enrollment in our schools? And is this a value add in our schools? So those are the three topics that are currently there. If possible, I, if we have time, I will add the fourth topic that Director Art, if, if the district is prepared by that time with...
We are prepared on all those.
Okay. No, I, I'm talking about Director Art's request on that food service.
Oh, no, I can't fit that in on that. That work session's gonna be pretty lengthy.
Okay, okay, thank you. So then we will have to look at a future work session to have that done. You had a question?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, I didn't see it. Director Bankes?
If we're gonna talk about after-school enrichment, have we been in school long enough to actually come up with pertinent information next week?
Well...
I'm assuming we're talking about work session next week?
Yeah, it is. It's just...
We just started school.
Right. It is just if those programs are up and running and how does enrollment look at those programs?
But it's only the second week of school.
Well, the idea of to...
It was an ask from the board at the first board meeting where we made comment on the success that we saw at a particular school. Brandon, what was the school that we were shooting out? That Frye, I think it was...
Monroe.
Monroe for the after-school program and the strong signal that they had for participation. And the board asked for an update on how has attendance been, not on the impact of the program, but have we filled the seats? It won't be a very long update, that'll take very...
So what we're really talking about is the program that we, the programs in the schools that we are financing.
Yes.
Yes.
I got you.
It's just an update on attendance.
I was thinking of clubs and...
No, 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 that, not that. It's the free after-school.
She got it.
Yeah. And Maricela reminded me that we are also going to discuss the UDEP in that work session.
Yeah, I need to do that as Dr. Kalaki will be out of the country on a well-deserved vacation at the next work session.
Okay.
So I wanted to jam that forward in order to be able to get the board the information for us to be moving in the right direction.
So to the board, I think we have a lot of weighty subject matter next work session, so please look at, hopefully all these items are up on board docs by this Thursday or Friday, by Friday, all the items.
Yes.
Yes. So the board has time over the weekend to look at all the preparation material. So you come on Wednesday. I'm assuming Dr. K usually posts flipped videos for those, so if you can look at the flip video, so we don't need to have lengthy presentations at that work session, we can directly jump into the discussion and the questions.
And I did ask Dr. Kalaki to not do a flip video on the, on the CMAS conversation. I wanted us to go through this in detail. There's just too much information for me to put together a 20-minute video and think that the nuance of what we need to talk about is resonating with each individual. So yes, this will be a long work session.
Okay. Okay, we'll plan accordingly. September 7th, we will have a board retreat that day and that retreat will again be facilitated by Dr. Cooper. And Maricela confirmed to me that the location is going to be at the Pioneer Museum. So this will be the conclusion of the discussion that took place at the previous retreat. So we will exit that retreat with the performance objectives that we started developing and completing that discussion out there.
In time?
4:00 PM, same, same, September 7th, 4:00 to 7:00 at the Pioneer Museum. Right now, it's scheduled. September 14th, we have a regular board meeting and the time, and I want to let the community know too, right now, it's in flux at this time. September 14th is the day the state board is going to be here and they are going to be holding their board meeting from the board dais up here. And we are, District 11 will be on the top of the agenda too, at least that much I have confirmed. We are going to be on top of the agenda where we can present what, what is happening in District 11, some of the good things we can highlight to the state board right at the top of the agenda. So I don't know when their board meeting starts, but stay tuned. As soon as we find out, I will let you know and I encourage board members, if your schedule allows. I think they start at 10 o'clock in the morning or whatever it is. So you may, if you are available, come here at 10 o'clock in the morning, we will be on top of the agenda. So our board meeting is going to be that evening, so the state board has to exit this boardroom before we can conduct our meeting. They have a hot stop at 5:00, so as soon as I confirm the times, I will let you know. We could also have an executive session prior to that board meeting, so we may start an executive session at the lower level and then come up here when the boardroom is available to start a board meeting. Hopefully that all made sense. So, okay, with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that the board adjourns.
Moved and seconded, roll call please, Maricela.
Aye.
Mrs. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Jorgensen?
Aye.
Dr. Mel Pakem?
Aye.
Mrs. Nelson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, we have adjourned at 8:02 PM. Thank you.